If you could also join me in a moment of silence for men and women in uniform.
Thank you. We'll call the meeting to order in two minutes after. Do you want any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, we have a liquor license application for Mountain Star Estate. And that'd be on number six. And we have additional correspondence similar subject to Shoreland over off of the other side of Route 17, opposite side of the lot. So there's two correspondents on that issue. One from Jake Custer.
Where you gonna put that one?
On number seven. And then on number nine, we have an additional correspondence on the Aquasic Tennis Court.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, thank you. Review and approve the meetings minutes of September 23.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the September 23 regular meeting minutes with any corrections or additions.
Okay. Thank you. Move consecutive. Corrections, comments? All in favor? One abstain. September 30.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the September 30 special meeting minutes as presented with any changes or additions.
Move consecutive. Any changes, comments? All in favor? Thank you. Public to speak, non-agenda items. We have a full house here tonight. Thank you for coming. If you have something that you're not here specifically for and you'd like to talk, this is the time.
Yes, hi. Should I stand up?
Yeah. State your name, please.
My name is Paul Newt. I run the Rat Van program.
Thank you.
And everything's going very well with the program. We've gotten a few extra volunteers. I don't know if any of you read my piece in the paper, but we've got a few extra people. Looks like we're gonna be in good shape for the fall winter. Looks like about 125 trips are gonna go out this year. Everything's going great with the program. I want to request two budget allocations for the Rat Van program. We certainly have the budget for it, but I know that on a bigger ticket item like this, like these two, I need to get approval from all of you folks. The first is something that I think is 19 years in the making. There's never been a volunteer appreciation event of any kind for these people, these wonderful people who spend their time. Just, you know, some of these people take an entire day to get somebody to a trip. Just, I think Alan Wickin over here just spent an entire day getting a lady to Portland and back for a much-needed health appointment. I would like to have a small party for these people, these wonderful drivers that we have. And I'd like to give them all a small gift, maybe like a $50 Amazon gift card. So the cost of the gift cards would be about $1,000 bucks and the cost of the party would be about $500 bucks. I'd like to peel that off of the Rat Van budget and have a nice little shindig to appreciate all these people who do such a thankless job. The second item is a little bit more expensive. I'd like to have a structure built behind the town garage where we could house the car. Right now, theoretically, the town garage employees are supposed to keep the snow off the car. But I think that when we get a giant snowstorm, I think that it seems like getting the snow off the Rat Van is like priority number 64 for those overworked guys. And then what ends up happening is that my volunteer gets to the car three or four days later and there's 12 inches of iced over snow on the car. And they have to spend a half hour chipping it all away, if they're even able to do so. Some of our drivers are kind of elderly. And then the person misses their appointment or gets late to the appointment. So I looked into this quite a lot and I thought we could just have one of those sort of metal carports, but none of them are rated for the snow load that we have here. So I talked to my builder, Randy Goodman, and Randy could build something like that for us out of wood and on concrete pads so that it would be nice and sturdy. And that would be something that probably would not exceed $6,000 bucks to get this kind of a structure built. I think it's needed and it would be great. This is a lot of money. It might sting a little bit, but maybe it'll make it sting a little less for me to remind you that this Rat Van coordinator position that I have has a $500 a month stipend. And I will donate 100% of that stipend back into the program. So that's six grand off of the top of what I'm asking for. And so that's what I need approval from you all for these two items.
Question?
This structure, is it a wall-less, unheated structure? Is that how you're composing?
Yeah, just a, just a, just some roofs, a roof on some posts.
How does that work with our insurance and all that sorts of stuff, John?
We just changed insurance to make sure that he's covered with the volunteer. The town contributes $5,000, so I'm not sure what the rest of your budget is. Apparently there's the plantations we can. I don't know what your total budget is. I know we share $5,000 of that.
Right, but-
And that mostly goes to you as a coordinator.
Sure, but we've got $26,000 in the Rat Van account.
That's what I'm getting at, how you propose to-
Yeah, no, no, no. I'm asking for a dip out of that account. And what I said at the end is that, you know, maybe in the past, the person who used to run this program used to take that $500 a month for himself. I'm just donating it all back to the program. So maybe that'll make this sting a little less that I'm asking for this money.
Certainly up to the selection. I don't know who oversees your budget. Is it you? We're only concerned about our $5,000, I think.
Yeah, I'm not sure either. I just inherited this program.
Tracy?
It is housed with the, our finance director, treasurer pays the bills out of the account. The plantations make the donations to us. So it's overseen through our town office. Still in policy development phases, but the structure will be covered under our MMA policy property casualty. That will just be an addition. I'll let him know when structures built and will be added. And the van's currently covered with our MMA insurance. So it's a town program and the town manages the account.
Thank you for that, Clark. Anybody else on the board have questions?
Thank you for your research into, you know, what would be a most cost-effective approach to, you know, to house the vehicle. I think, I think the Rat Van monies accumulate to prepare for that next vehicle purchase. So your offer to donate back your monthly stipends, very thoughtful. And-
We're a long way away from needing another vehicle. It just has 30,000 miles on it. The car we have right now is gonna last for a long time.
That's good to hear. Even more so if it's housed under a garage and not getting snowed on every day.
Yeah.
So do we need a motion to appropriate money out of the $26,000 to build a structure and to do this party?
Yeah, we do, but hang on. Any other questions for him regarding this before the motion? Keith?
I guess I'd like to understand where the footprint's gonna be put at the highway garage.
That was gonna be my question. I think you need to coordinate with Keith.
Yeah.
I think you're gonna find, we're happy to support this thing, but some coordination is the location. So it meets the requirements from the, have you met Keith?
No.
You two get to meet each other at some point here. That was a photographic moment. I missed it.
Well, this, this all assumes that it all, it all works with the required-
Certainly. I just, I know where space is questionable. I don't know the size of structure you're gonna be planning on either. So I mean, I just, without knowing the footprint and kind of the general idea of where you would-
I guess I just imagine it being right where we parked the Rat Van right now and-
With the, yeah, no, it's, it's on the, kind of the gable end of the E-band of the entrance of the highway garage. So probably not the best idea with the snow load that comes off the building.
Come right in, man. There's a catch right here.
I think it would be reviewed a bit more.
Yeah, if we could, yeah. Yeah.
Who's that, School Street not getting used?
I would be, I mean, knowing a whole lot can be a temporary, I say temporary structure, removable structure, I think that's probably a better fit, honestly, but still, you know.
Good. It would be prudent to have Keith figure out what you're asking, a good footprint, whether it's three School Street or wherever. He can come up with a good spot. And then get a concrete number, whether it's from Randy Goodman or one of the several other builders we have down. Make sure that's six grand, actually six grand. I'm not in favor of that part. Reason being is there are other contributors. There are other contributors to the program. I mean, we're forcing, I'm just suggesting that he's done the research with the Rat Van and he's got a low number, feels comfortable with. His plantation in Dallas is a contributing to the program. So I don't, I'm not comfortable with dictating how he does it. That's all. But if that's what you'd like, make the motion and we'll rock and roll.
Just talking about it. I mean, if the structure's getting put on our land, then I would think Keith or John or someone else would be facilitating how, where it goes and how we go about-
Fully agree.
Getting money for it.
Yep. Any other questions from the board? Entertainer motion.
Can it be a bundled motion or do you want it separate for?
Well, yes, mainly two items, one for the building and one for the recognition, appreciation, the volunteer. They can do what they want, I guess. Requested total of $7,500.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
It might be less.
I'll make that motion to allow them to pull out of their bank account up to $7,500 for the structure to be placed wherever prudent in the appreciation gathering.
Second. Move consecutive. Any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much.
God bless you guys. Thanks very much.
God bless you. Never mind us. Anybody else on the public to speak? The non-agenda items. Well, let's move forward then. Consent items, quick claim deed, map 035, lot 038. Any questions on this? So are you looking forward for a motion on this one?
Yes.
The consent, the quick claim deed.
To approve the quick claim deed is for paid Suelene, but it went beyond the date. So the only way for them to discharge is through a quick claim deed. So it's all paid.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the municipal quick claim deed for Richard Jones.
Second. Move consecutive. Any questions? All in favor? Thank you. Mountain Star Estate's liquor license.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license renewal for Mountain Star, Mountain Star Estate LLC as presented.
Move consecutive. Questions? All filled out. All set there? Comments? All set? All in favor? Thank you. Correspondence, Anita Haynes, Carol Sullivan, and Clayton Roberts. You've all read it. Mayors to M&amp;H. From the board. Any questions, comments on this?
I guess I'd like to hear from Tom, since he's the resident expert in codes and what M&amp;H is supposed to do and what's actually going on, if he knows anything.
All right, Tom, you wanna chime in?
I don't think he's seen it.
Oh, okay.
All right, in that case, then we'll let you read it. We'll go to the next one and come back. We have a letter from Guy Rule about solar array, asking if there's any, I gotta get to it here, hold on. If we've made any progress regarding that, the answer is no, but we will be. Next up is Matthew Terry Palmer, Shoreland zoning amendment. Questions, sir?
Doesn't seem to be in our jurisdiction.
No. Tom's been working on that. We're trying to get it with Abco to create a overlay district for just that area because it is U.D. Their properties are all split by Route 17 coming down. We're hoping to have something ready by June town meeting to vote on in the ordinance. And the other letter we got is a similar situation right up the street. Same thing. Two residents are asking to change the zoning so that they could build garages up there across the street on the other side of the property.
For those of you who don't understand what we're talking about, the property, properties in question, their, their properties were divided by the railroad or the highway, Route 17. And our ordinance currently don't allow them to build across the street and use that property unless it's a primary dwelling. So your answer then?
Yeah, the ordinance basically says you can't build an outbuilding like a garage unless you have a primary residence on the same lot. And you can, but all their, all their residences are on the shore.
So are they aware, have they been made aware that there's something in the works?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they've talked to Tom.
You wanna address that, Tom?
Sure. I identified this problem about four or five months into the job because some of the people are coming, asking questions about those lots. And it's clear to me that something should be addressed because these little lots were the result of the road dividing lots, that it existed as one parcel before. And so I started working with Abco. There were some key personnel changes, so it took about a year to get started on it. But what we're trying to do is create a district overlay or an overlay district that would allow for accessory structures just in that stretch of town to be built without a principal dwelling. And then probably reduce some of the setbacks as well, so that people could put in garages or boathouses, things of that nature, without having anything crammed up the shoreside of Route 17.
Right. Thank you. Do you have any questions that you?
Well, if we had, if we had the room on the lakeside of our lot, we would love to have pilt the garage there. But most of our land is across the street where we happen to be. We have like 300 feet back there. So Tom did say that we could clear the area in hopes that the town will vote for it. Hopefully there'll be, anybody that had land that lives in Rangeley would probably want to be able to use their land as well. So hopefully that they, no one will have a problem with it. So, yeah, we've gone forward with it. We're hoping that all of us are able to use that land. I do understand that that land should be used in a way that's constructive and attractive, I guess, to property values of everybody that lives there. If somebody wanted to put up a lot of just RVs indiscriminately, that probably would not be anything that any of us, most of us would want to have happen. So I don't know what the Shoreland zoning amendment will say, if it'll address things such as that.
It would create a separate zone district of that area. That's what I think Tom's thinking of working with Abco.
What it, what it does is it creates a zone within a zone to meet unique circumstances. And so I've got about a 12-page draft at this point that I've worked on with Abco. Hopefully we'll have that ready come June with hopefully the revision and updates to chapter 30 as well. It's just very slow, methodical work. There's a lot of attention to detail, legal issues and-
Yeah, yeah, we've been hoping that it was gonna happen. You know, we've been talking about it for some time now. And I know that there's a lot going on in Rangeley. I understand that. But we're, we're hoping to be able to start building our garage next, next summer. I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We'll, we'll most likely be presenting drafts once we enter into the budget season. And we're working on the selectmen's warrant. And, you know, those, those drafts are available for public to view. So it's- Yeah, I'd be interested in seeing those. Yeah. Thank you.
Anything else?
Unless my husband has anything bad, I don't know where he has.
No, I think it's in the works. I appreciate the time and effort that everybody's putting in on this. But my wife says we have no room on, on the shore side of things.
Absolutely. Gotcha.
We own more land across the road than we do here. No fault of our own. They put a railroad which is state road. So we could just get some use out of it. We won't have to park on the lawn because we've been doing it for 40 years.
Yep. When, when the, when the draft ordinance is prepared, there will be a public hearing. Please be sure you're at that so that you can, if you can, or a letter of support regards to, so people understand your positions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, very good. The second letter that we added to the edition is similar issue from the Custer family, Jim and Julie Custer, same issue. Next up on the community concept. So thank you from them. Let's go back to Anita Haynes, Carol Sullivan. Are you all set there? Tom, anything you wanna address at this meeting or you wanna wait?
I'm familiar with the issue. They brought it to my attention. I haven't had time to read this and digest it, so I'm just kind of briefly go what I'm familiar with. And that's that, I guess after Bill Booker passed away, some of the aggregates started to be processed on the M&amp;H lot. I didn't plan to do anything with that because it's been so many years now that I think it would be hard for the town to win that in court because they never took action on it. They should have been taking action. M&amp;H has cooperated with cleaning up the buffering lot between their garage and the residence subdivision. And that has been returned back to a residential lot. The concrete truck washing, I'm not really sure if there's a facility going to be built for that. I think it was just gonna be a burn setup. I did run that by MDEP, Dusty Board, but that was for a front of my testament. He didn't have an issue as long as the material washed off the truck was contained and then disposed of properly. So that's pretty much in a nutshell.
Eric, anything from the board on that? All right, thank you. Anything from, you wanna comment? You all set? Okay. All righty. Next up is old business. We had a public hearing tonight for road estimates.
Can I just, can we just backtrack? Just a comment. Sorry, just a late dot. This again is kind of out of, out of the board selectmen's jurisdiction. We don't supervise the code enforcement officer, nor are we involved with any conditional use permits. It's planning board and code officers. So there's, there's really nothing, you know, nothing we can do. You know, if Tom needed more support, more time, you know, more resources to deal with it, then he would need to go to the town manager who supervises him. So it's, it's not that, we just can't take any action. It's not, it's not part of a board selectman role or, or do we, we don't have authority either. So just wanted to clarify that.
Road estimates. We had a public hearing tonight about the road issues here in the, in the town. It was held at 5:00. A few people did show up. I really don't have much to report at this point in regards to that. And there's nothing else in our folder here. So next we'll move to, I'm sure, most of you are here, seeing some tennis ball players and some racquetball, pickleball players, is the Aquasic Tennis Court. Lots of letters here. You wanna chime in, John? Start it off.
A lot of them want pickleball, a lot of them want to keep it tennis. A lot of them wanna do both. They go like they have, I guess, somewhere in the hell. Keith's a little more familiar with lines on the tennis court.
All right, then let me tell you what. I was approached by a good friend, Mr. Sewicki, and we went over to the Aquasic courts, basketball and tennis court. And he showed me, Jesus, pardon me, showed me the decay and the degree of danger as some people see it on the Aquasic court with the uneven, uneven levels of the base. And I would agree that that needs to be addressed. Agreed? I'm not quite sure where it mixes, mixes in for the future here.
Agreed. And it's actually budget. There's money in the budget. That was approved.
And then it was, there's a bunch of paperwork we have here regarding different ways of approaching, turning tennis courts into pickleball courts or making them cohabitate, if you will, within the same surroundings. I had also suggested to Mr. Sewicki that maybe we look at, if you're looking for more pickleball courts, that we not extract tennis courts, but paint the lines on the basketball court. So that there's multiple uses there as well too.
Well, we measured, we measured the basketball court.
Do me a favor, just so that everybody knows who's talking and we get it. Could you just say your name, please?
Oh, Keith Sewicki.
Thank you.
Yes. We measured the basketball court and that is 88 feet long, roughly 50 feet wide. Now, you could put in three pickleball courts because a pickleball court is 20 by 44, but you want an overrun that goes created by 30 by 60. Now, the only issue would be a little bit wider on the basketball court so that we could get the 60 feet, if that's, you know, what you would end up doing. So I mean, there's possibilities with the basketball court. The, one of the issues that is, well, one of the issues, concerns is moving pickleball, the netting of the pickleball courts, if they're temporary versus if they're permanent. If they're temporary, who sets them up? When they, when do they get set up? Storage of them and all that sort of issue. If they're permanent, if courts are set up as permanent courts, then they are just like the, you know, permanent tennis courts. So.
Let's open this up to the public. Excuse me, before I do that, anything from the board? One chime in before we get going with it. Go ahead.
The two, the two in town are for both, right?
Right.
And one of them in Aquasic is for both?
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, we painted that one several years ago.
So now we have three.
Right.
Okay. So in Aquasic, you wanna just make it?
In Aquasic, if you read the paperwork, you could put, you could put four, four courts on a, well, oh, it's usually an underutilized tennis court. You can put four pickleball courts with permanent netting.
Anything else from the board?
Yes. Yeah, to go on with what Don was asking, how does it function right now in the town park? How does the pickleball court work on the existing tennis courts? How does that? I don't know much about pickleball. I know it has a net and stuff.
I can discern. Jeff is a Paulski originally. Right now, pickleball players, I mean, they can reserve the court and come at any time during the day. But we have currently, we schedule Thursday and Sunday mornings at 8:00 a.m. to come and play. And we have anywhere from 12 to 16 people show up. And so if you have two courts going, those are eight people playing. And the other people will wait and they'll come and we alternate and take turns. It's a very populous sport. The, the numbers are increasing compared with a tennis racket. A, a pickleball racket is, is not quite as unwieldy. And so you find that- find that elderly people, children just learning the game, you know, pick it up and adapt to it more readily than tennis.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but I guess, do you utilize the current netting that's there for regular tennis? You don't have to move it around or anything?
We don't move it around. What we do is, there is a band that holds the center of the tennis net taut in the middle, and what we do is we slide it diagonally and pull down the net so it's lower. It's not ideal because it's more of a V shape than straight across horizontal, but it works.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the board? Okay, there's a lot of factions here. Ground rules are simple. Raise your hand, I'll recognize you. Please state your name. We got to hear from both sides, tennis court as well as pickleball. So who'd like to be first? Yes?
Alan Wickin, Dallas Plantation. I'm speaking for tennis. Even though I think pickleball's a great sport, and when I can't play tennis anymore, I plan to play pickleball. But it seems to me that the current situation where all these courts are being shared is working. We have a schedule of about forty people playing doubles tennis every day of the Monday through Friday, from nine to ten-thirty generally, at least till ten. And that works because we only use one of the courts in Rangeley, and we have the good graces of three other private court owners who allow us to use their courts at that time of the day. Now, that could change with decisions by court owners, private court owners, and then we'd really be putting pressure on that aquatic court if that should happen. We've been coming to Rangeley ever since the early eighties camping at the state park, and the courts were there at that time, I'm quite sure, the tennis courts. And I'm sure at some point before that, some tennis advocates or whatever urged the town to build tennis courts, and they did. And I think with the growth of pickleball and its popularity, and it's a great sport, maybe the town could do what the Rangeley Health and Wellness has done, and they've created a couple of courts out in their parking lot that appear to be very sufficient. And I think the question right now today should be, should the town, in its supporting of recreational activity here, consider building a whole new court and repairing the cracks in the existing tennis courts? Build new surfaces for the growing pickleball graves. Does that make sense?
Thank you. Eric? Yes?
I'm Laura Reynolds, resident of Rangeley Plantation, and I wanted to make a couple points. First of all, I'm fortunate to have a job this summer right across from the aquatic courts, and I actually never realized how much those courts were used. I thought, just driving by, they really weren't, but I was there literally every day this summer from nine till nine at night, and those courts are used constantly. There were some pickleballers being using it, but there also were a lot of tennis players using it. A lot of families there, it was really fun watching little kids out there with these big rackets, playing with their whole family, so it was clearly something that is being used a lot, and I was surprised at that. I am both a pickleball and a tennis player. In fact, I've probably have played more pickleball recently because of the fortunate issue that Rangeley Health and Wellness has an indoor court, so I'm able to play pickleball all winter long. As Alan said, there are two beautiful new courts there that are free, are available for anyone to use.
Not free.
They're not free, but it's a small payment, and I'm sure Rangeley Health and Wellness is more than happy to work with anyone that can't financially pay what they're asking at this point. But I, from a standpoint of wanting to promote Rangeley as an area where we've got a lot of activities to be done for people that are coming to visit, I would hate to see us exclude any activity that is already available. Would be all for expanding it in any other way.
Thank you.
Calling to Rangeley. As you can see, I'm the only two here, which is usually unusual, but I was asked by my husband and my sister-in-law to speak on behalf of my, sorry, emotional mother-in-law, who did raise the money and spent a lot of hard-earned time and effort to have those tennis courts put in an aquatic. Actually, I have a picture of my husband in a bulldozer, bulldozing that lot. And we would love to see that be multi-use, but we can't make tennis go away. That just would kind of hurt.
Thank you. Yes?
Yeah, Jeff Sapolsky. You know, we're not trying to create, the pickleball players are not trying to alienate the tennis players. We do want everyone to be able to play, but we really mainly want to bring awareness to the selectmen of the growth of pickleball and how important it is. I think if you were to do a survey of the people in Rangeley, the number of people that are familiar with tennis probably approaches a hundred percent, and the number that are familiar with pickleball is significantly lower. Maybe it's a hundred people in town that have even heard of it. But despite that, then those people that have heard of it are very dedicated towards playing the game, and plus, because it's growing, people in other communities, when they look at coming to Rangeley, you know, just as an example, you know, we're talking about a tennis court. They're called tennis courts. They're not called racket courts or multi-use pickle, you know, multi-use courts and pickleball courts. There is just letting people know that they are racket courts and that pickleball is available, and I think actually there are people that will look at that and be a reason, you know, to go out and play. They may not even be aware of it. So the idea is, you know, we want to bring awareness. The idea, you know, using the aquatic court solely for pickleball was an idea. We're not committed to just, to just that idea. You know, we would like to work with the tennis people and with the town to come up with something that maximizes the number of courts, you know, for everyone.
Thank you. You had your hand up.
Fred Dubey, I'm outside of Dallas Plantation. The only point I was trying to make was the thing that other people have already talked a little bit, that pickleball is growing, and it does work with a wide section of the population, and that's why it's growing. I mentor a young man at the school here, and he never has played tennis. He's in third, fourth grade, and he and I played pickleball for an hour, and he loved it. I also, and I did not know this until I got online and looked up pickleball today, and there is handicap pickleball for people in wheelchairs, which is a great opportunity for a lot of people that are getting in that stage of their life, and it's just a wide-open sport. And I support both pickleball and tennis. I've been a tennis player last in my life.
Thank you.
Karen Siewicki. How it is now, we have three pickleball courts, and when we play in Rangeley, only eight can play at one time. So when we have sixteen, we don't get our exercise in for the day. It's mostly socialization, and most of us are there to get a full workout of pickleball playing. If we do the court in Aquasic, then that only is four people, so it's not, if you're going to do the tennis court in Aquasic, then I don't think any of us would go. None of us want to just play four, you know. So it's like the only place that we can go to play at least eight is in Rangeley. So if you keep the tennis court, that's fine, but you don't even really have to line it for pickleball, because who wants to go with sixteen people on one court? You know, it's just not adequate. So it's either, you know, keep it how it is, and we just have to live by it, but maybe we can make it so pickleball doesn't get the leftover hours of the tennis. So we only go two days a week, because tennis is there five days a week, and they're always at nine o'clock. So we were going at ten-fifteen for a while. Well, in the summertime, that ruins your whole day, so then we started going at eight. So we go at eight, we have, you know, twelve with sixteen there, and when they come, we have to give them the court, and then half of us leave. You know, it's doable, but not really.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Tricia Roy is in the Rangeley. I have a question. We had this conversation back in 2017, when they did line the other court, and it was, one of the things that was definitely brought up is it's first come, first served on courts. Nobody has...
It doesn't happen.
We, we, we... Nobody has any authority to the court, right?
It's town of Rangeley cooperating.
And it was definitely pointed out at that meeting, it was first come, first served, so that shouldn't even be an issue that you have to get off the court because somebody else has arrived.
We kind of feel like we don't really, we just, we...
And they expect it. Yeah.
No, no, the other...
This is what we're going to do. One more time, I'm going to remind. You notice how Tricia raised her hand, and I went, "Yeah, excellent." Let's please make sure this happens. I'm going to get everybody to talk, I promise you, but we're going to do this orderly. I think, did you have your hand up? There was somebody over here. Is it Mr. Wickin?
I've already spoken, if somebody else wants to.
Okay, Mr. Wickin, you can take over for just eight seconds. Who would like to speak who hasn't spoken? All right, go ahead.
Well, first off, I want to compliment Fred for bringing up the fact that people with disabilities take to pickleball readily, more readily perhaps than tennis, but that's not to say that tennis has not had wheelchair tennis for a good long time. The most recent time that I cycled across the West from San Francisco to Denver with a bunch of disabled Afghan and Iran, or Iraq, Iran, it's sort of a, it could be any time now. Veterans, three or four of those team members, paraplegics, were, I think, high-class, high-functioning tennis players. So I've gotten to know some that are, really take that very seriously, and it's been around a while, but, you know, it's a little harder to pull off unless you're particularly skilled. So that's all I have to say. Just want to balance Fred's point. Thank you.
I think if there's an opportunity for the town, now, the best possible scenario would be finding a spot sixty by one-twenty and putting in four pickleball courts dedicated. Tennis could have theirs, and, you know, the three courts, the two down here and the one in Aquasic. That would be the ideal situation. Now, whether the town can come up with that, you know, or whether we should continue the discussion and look at a lot of different alternatives between the tennis folks and the pickleball folks, and see if we can come up with a resolution, because it is. I mean, people love their tennis, people love their pickleball, pickleball is growing, tennis, I'm not sure what the growth rate is, but I'm sure, you know, there's a lot of folks that would like to do that. But is there, you know, kind of this middle ground? It works, trust me, it works much better, because I see it in Florida when I'm down there winter. It works much better, a lot less contention, if there's dedicated tennis courts, dedicated pickleball courts. You don't get, you know, the contention that, you know, you guys probably have seen a little bit of it.
No. It's always real smooth. You carry it over.
Detective Cindy from the Plantation. I know a few years back that they repaired the aquatic court, and it has never been right for a long time. It's always had big cracks in it with grass going out, and it's been dangerous. So I know a lot of regular tennis players refused to play there anymore. People had fallen down and gotten hurt. I agree with Craig. I think that if there's funds allotted to not just repair, but that court needs to probably be re-ripped up and resurfaced again, start from scratch, not repaired, and then superimpose either the basketball court or find property to replace it. And I am an average both pickleball and tennis player year-round.
Thank you.
I just want to remind you that there are, there's three pickleball courts at Rangeley Health and Wellness, two outdoor, one indoor.
They're not public courts.
They're not, but someone pays for, someone would pay for a public court, and as I said, I'm sure Rangeley, I'm a member of the board of Rangeley Health and Wellness, I'm sure we would work with you on working. That's the issue. Seems silly for the town and all the taxpayers to potentially pay for something that is right there available.
Kate, you all hold on. Cindy?
I just didn't know if, I mean, so we're talking about just almost like a total rehab of this aquatic court, and I didn't know if there's room to add two designated pickleball courts off to the side, you know, compromised, you asked for four on the existing layout at the tennis court, you know, how much, if there even is the space. I mean, they certainly can't do it in the town park, but I didn't know if things could be configured in such a way where there are two designated pickleball courts that can be put in down there without affecting the current tennis court.
Thank you.
Just, Jeff Sapolsky, just addressing that, I think, I can speak for the pickleball players, we'd be very happy with some solution along those lines, where, you know, if we can think outside of the box and try to, you know, placate everyone, that would be very reasonable. But the concept of just playing pickleball on a tennis court doesn't really work as well. I mean, it was a good compromise in the beginning, but it's not working out ideally, and having dedicated courts, I think, would make everyone happy.
Cindy, if you put two dedicated courts there and lined the tennis court as a pickleball, that would give us three courts, and that would be sufficient. Something like that would work.
Yes, ma'am?
Joanie Yankee. I don't know why pickleball people and tennis people can't get together and, if nothing else, work out some kind of scheduling so that it does work for all the people who want to play pickleball at once, same with tennis, which is the way it is now with tennis people.
Thanks, thank you. That just took care of that one I was going to ask and suggest, thanks, glad you brought that up.
And as far as the pickleball on aquatic court, I played pickleball there quite a few years ago, and there were many pickleball people there, and we shared. I mean, there was one court, but there wasn't just four people playing. There weren't just four people playing. There were people sitting and waiting, yes, but probably were tennis, so people there.
Okay. Go ahead.
That's when we lined courts, even down in Saddleback, around the lake, there's tennis courts there, and because of that reason, Joanie, we lined, we got permission to line two down there, so we would have two courts to play on and not just one. And so once we lined that, then we never went back to Aquasic, you know. It's, we need at least two, if not three.
Yeah, after we lined the courts down in Saddleback Lake, we were at the condos down there, we were kind of at the mercy of the landowners down there, and things kind of didn't work out all that well, so...
Sounds like you pickleball. People are pretty tough, tennis court people, got three or four courts they could play on.
We've lined courts all over.
I mean, we tried.
Here's Doc.
Bill Thompson, Rangeley Plantation. Just for the purposes of the non-pickleball, non-tennis-playing people whose heads must be spinning right about now, what we're really trying to do is, we don't want any less tennis courts in Rangeley. Tennis is going to be around long after we are. Pickleball is growing, and what we'd like to do is to just make sure that Rangeley is looking to the future. And the future of racket sports is going to be more pickleball. It'll still be tennis, it'll still be ping pong, there'll be a whole lot of things, but it's, pickleball is growing. It's being taught in the schools, it's the fastest-growing sport in America, and we want Rangeley to be attractive to people in many, many different ways, and this is a way for Rangeley to be attractive to people, to have it as a center. Most people from down, anywhere from south of here, are used to communities where there are multiple pickleball designated courts, and they're going to, the people who are playing pickleball right... And they're gonna, the people who are playing pickleball right now are not really that important. It's the people who are going to be coming to this town and are going to be using skiing, hunting, fishing, biking trails. It's gonna be, what's gonna be attractive about this community? And pickleball will be a small piece, but it'll be an important piece if we do it correctly. And that's the challenge you guys have is, all right, how to do it? And we don't want the tennis players to have any less than they've got now. But it will benefit the community. People will come here, you know, a little, they'll be more inclined to come if they see it's a pickleball center. And you don't need a ton of courts to be a pickleball center, but we need way more than we've got now. So, as several people suggested, it really looks like we're hurdling toward a compromise of some kind, which makes sense. And that'd be great. And I guess the challenge of the selectmen is to figure out, okay, where do we go from here? But to recognize that we need to be focused on the future, not the present.
Yeah, we could work out a scheduling thing. That could be done. But it's not gonna really meet the needs of the future, what will be coming down to the benefit of the town.
Sue Sully, Rangelay. You know, every time we play, I won't say every time, nothing's every time. But frequently tourists will be stopping us and say, "We didn't realize pickleball was here. You know, can we play?" and all this or so. So, we're always picking up extra people. They're watching, they're interested. Some of them have come from tournaments a little further south in Maine. And they say, "Oh, we play here." Some of them leave here and go down to Farmington because there's a group down there that they play with. We don't wanna go to Farmington. We wanna play right here where, you know, we live here. And we wanna dissipate in this. The biggest problem, as we've said, the nets, you know, are a little shorter in pickleball. So, I don't know if it compromises the tennis nets that we're on, so you're bringing them down a little bit. It's just, we're here.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
How about building pickleball courts in the school? It's town-owned, right? I mean.
Separate board.
Separate.
Yep. Colleen Coob sitting in front of you. You can come to a board meeting on Thursday.
Good point, thank you. Yes?
How much is the basketball court used in the Aquasic?
Lot. Yep. I can't quantify it, but.
I just, actually, it'd be nice for us to find a way to plan for two designated pickleball courts. I mean, we wouldn't expect the tennis players to play with a pickleball net, just out of respect for the sport. So, just kind of gearing that thought in that direction wherever we find, you know, the spot and money.
So, can I ask a question in comparison here? As you stated, the health center has three courts, two outside.
Keith, tell them who you are and what you do.
Keith Savage, Public Services Director, obviously kind of oversees the rec program with help of Liz, the rec coordinator. So, my question is, listening to you all and obviously the need for courts, and obviously there is a, it seems like there's courts that are being underutilized in my understanding, if I could be wrong. So, my question becomes to you all is, aside from the ten dollar per person charge at the health center, is there any deterrents that would stop you from going in a basic standpoint? Because I think right now, my point to this is, the easier solution to this is rather than looking at building something in the short term, the rec has money in their budget. So, if I can talk with the health center and we come now to find a way to compensate some of that, that revenue that they would bring in from that pickleball opportunity, then maybe that comes a free use or discounted use.
Yep. Good point.
Partner with them if there's courts in place already.
Anything else you wanna, I know Cindy's got her hand up. Anything else you wanna finish? No, I just, we come down here.
I didn't know, and maybe Laura's wanted to ask, but, you know, just kind of piggybacking on Keith's idea, if there could be any designated time for prepayment of the pickleball courts where it's like, okay, well, here is the public's time from, you know, eight to 10 a.m. on such and such a day with these courts.
Yeah, I obviously can't, again, Laura Reynolds, I can't speak for the board as a whole, but I would certainly think that. I mean, we built another pickleball court this year because we knew it's important. We teach pickleball to CIA, the after-school children, because we know it's important. And we would love to have more people using the courts. And I'm sure that we'd be happy to work either through some sort of.
Are there only two?
There's two outside and one inside. But that's not to say we wouldn't look at making another one if.
I just think it needs to be a public court, just like tennis, it'd stay up a public court.
Remember, we'll let everybody speak. Yeah. Yep.
That's right. That's fair to say.
Okay, guys. Go ahead.
Yeah. How much, what's the cost to build from scratch a pickleball court? And is a pickleball court where you're talking about four actual?
Yeah, I talked to Maine tennis down in Gray. And I mentioned the Aquasic Court. And I told the guys, "I know you haven't seen the court, but it's a sixty by one-hundred-and-twenty standard tennis." And they convert to pickleball courts. I told them that probably everything's gonna have to be dug up, a new base put in, and then repaved. That's gonna have to be done, whether it's tennis, whether it's pickleball, whether it's whatever. And they, he estimated if it was done down, down south, somewhere in the vicinity of seventy to eighty thousand dollars. He said he wasn't sure what the cost would be up here because he didn't know about the transport of material and labor costs up in this area. But in the, you know, the gray Portland area, it would have been seventy, eighty thousand dollars to basically do the whole thing, including putting in new fencing and stuff. Now, you know, I don't know what, you know, you guys could do to, rather than sub everything out, you know, what the department could do. I have no idea on that. But that was roughly the cost he gave me.
Is that taking our tennis court, resurfacing it and lining it for pickleball?
Pickleball court.
What about a dedicated pickleball court?
That would essentially be the same.
No, I mean, build a whole other court just for pickleball.
That would be essentially, essentially what you're doing. I mean, essentially, with that seventy or eighty thousand dollars from what it sounded like, he's gonna be putting in a whole new court because everything has to be, you know, stripped down and, and material put on.
Now, just so that we're clear, because you and I talked a lot about this, this is the diagram you gave me.
Okay.
Okay, and the top of it shows four courts within one tennis court.
Yeah, that's the four courts within one tennis court.
Okay, so if you were gonna build a dedicated court, you would have four of them from scratch. Forget the tennis court. No, forget the tennis court. If you were gonna start from scratch and build a pickleball court.
If I was gonna start from scratch, I'd have a sixty-one-hundred-and-twenty-foot pad and four pickleball courts on it.
Okay. And do we know what that would cost?
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay, you're talking about fixing.
It's the same size as a tennis court.
It's almost the same thing that you'd have to do to that court in order to refer it totally. The cost of making a pickleball court versus a tennis court, there'd be increased cost because you'd have more striping, which wouldn't be significant.
Four nets.
And four nets and posts. That would be the difference in cost between making a pickleball court or a tennis court.
And that is taking the tennis court right out of the mix in Aquasic?
Yeah.
Right.
But if you put that, you know, if you wanted to, that'd be the same cost if you found sixty by one-hundred-and-twenty-foot somewhere else.
Fully understand. Yep. Ethan, you had something?
Yeah, are pickleball courts typically fenced in? Is the ones at the health center fenced in? I can't remember.
It is a short removable fence.
Removable fence.
Mainly just so the ball doesn't go fly.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Typically, a lot of the courts that are made are, do have higher fencing because then they could put wind guards and stuff like that.
Okay, I was just wondering if there's a way to pray the cost.
Not between the four courts.
No.
Between the four courts, it's not.
Right, it's just the perimeter. I just, I've been up there a bunch of times and I couldn't remember if there was a fence there or not because it's not as large as what we have for tennis downtown.
Anybody else from the public? John?
I just had a thought, because you're talking about a new location. And so, everybody knows, we've reached an agreement with the owner of Depot Street, where the town has been leasing that, so for purchase for parking. And we have a signed purchase and sale agreement subject to approval at a town meeting. Next meeting on the twenty-first, we have a five o'clock public hearing. And then the selectmen will have to schedule a special town meeting to see if the town's willing to purchase that. But I'm thinking, I mean, that's almost four acres of land down there that could be used as pickleball and parking for the town. I mean, it might be a good solution because the town needs the parking in the future. The town, and that, to me, is the perfect spot. So, the next meeting, we'll have a public hearing on it. And then the selectmen will decide on a, you know, town meeting and see if the town's interested.
I kind of wish John hadn't brought that up because what I've seen now is you're gonna be duking it out when people wanna park their four-wheeler trails there while you're trying to play pickleball. But that'll be another issue in the future we have to worry about.
That can be figured out.
Yep. There's a couple of things that have come to mind. You've expressed an interest to be able to work together. It would be very helpful to the board, I'm speaking for myself, but I know Cindy had mentioned this earlier about plans. If there was a cohesive effort to bring to the board a plan so that we would have it ready for our next regular town meeting, because I don't think this falls under the category of a special town meeting. Might be wrong, but my estimation is that if we have a plan ready for the next town meeting, A, what we do with Aquasic, how much it's gonna cost, what our capabilities are, as we talked about earlier, and participating in that, if we even have the capability. Because we have a very extensive road projects ahead of us that was described to us earlier, it's very expensive. And maybe we do it, maybe we don't because we can't afford it. So, there's lots of things to weigh out here in terms of finances, town's capability and so on. Secondly, the town park, it was suggested earlier that we can't do anything more in the town park. Maybe you'll wanna rethink that. Let's just throw that out there for you to think about because.
Parking was already next there. Green space, parking was already next there.
Yeah. You might want to think about it. Is there such a thing as a grass pickleball court?
No.
Well, there is a tennis.
Yeah. Then you're talking about serious upkeep.
Okay, all right, all right. Anything else from the public regarding this? Anything from the board?
Steve, now, what are you suggesting for next steps? Should there be a committee made up of people? What do you, how do you envision that to work?
If you're gonna get this built, you gotta go through Keith and get it into his budget with the recreation component. If you wanna do it faster, I'll tell you all of the steps that you can do. And please chime in on the board if I miss one or overspeak. You can form a petition like they've done for other things to make the town move forward on a particular topic, should you get all the proper signatures. There's a lot of people from different plantations. Don't sign it. Won't matter, won't work. Okay, it has to be Rangelay residents if Rangelay's gonna fund it and build it. All right? But I would suggest that you all get together and come up with a plan that makes some sense that you can get the entire board to back. But you still need to go through Keith, locations, monies available through rec department, what you plan on doing, because I don't think you're gonna find any support for saying no to everything, but you're gonna find a lot of support with multiple use. Well, does that make sense? Anybody wanna fill in anymore? That answer your question?
Well, if, it didn't as far as making dedicated facilities, you're talking multiple use. You don't think that dedicated facilities for tennis and pickleball, dedicated facilities definitely work better. And are, trust me, they work more.
No, I'm not disagreeing with anything any of you have said. What I'm asking, what I'm suggesting is that you get together, and if you can't come to an agreement, that's still fine. But you've still gotta go through his budget.
Okay.
In order for us here, unless you petition it and make it something that he has to deal with. I would suggest the first route first, which is to go through Keith and get a plan, an organized plan. But I really would, me personally, I can't remember which one of you said it, work together. But I'm gonna be right with Mrs. Coob because Mrs. Tremaine, my grandmother, was side by each building that Aquasic Park. And as much as it needs repair, no question about that, I walked it with you, it's dangerous. No argument there at all. We need to fix it.
Now, when will we know about the, yeah, Depot Street?
Next elected meeting. They'll have the hearing.
Yeah.
I mean, the townspeople have to vote and approve on it. I thought that was just gonna be on the June twenty.
Whatever the elected decides. It has to, it has, any purchase of land from the town to the town has to be voted by the towns.
Let's remember something else about Depot Street. It is not tarred. It is not prepared for tarred. There is no drainage done to that yet. So, as good an idea as it is, and it is, this land potentially available, I would put that as in your future growth. My suggestion only, please. I'm not speaking for everybody on the board. But, you know, we've seen how these things work for a while. It may take some more time than you like. So, I would go the other route first.
Yeah, existing resources.
Clear as mud? No more questions, comments? Yes, Ken?
Yeah, I got one for Cindy. She said that the parking in the park was next. And it's not like you're saying, because why? Because you can't use the space for?
No, it was the parking committee just felt that it was, they got enough feedback regarding green space and the, and just looking at the reconfiguration of the lots, of the parking lots in town from diagonal to parallel, there was only a loss of two or three, I think, Kenny. This all, this all came from the parking committee and their presentation to the board.
Thank you.
Can I make one final comment?
Yes, sir.
I would recommend that the pickleball people get the tennis people behind them. Because if you guys can work together as a team to get a dedicated pickleball court, then you're gonna get, the tennis people will get the pickleball people off the tennis courts. Right? And I would continue to go and try and get it in the park where we were going to have parking because we're not, you're not gonna disturb as much land as we would have if we had had a parking lot there, which is to the backside of Parkside, between that and the tennis court. So, there's enough room in there, I think you guys can do it there if you wanted to pursue that.
John, is there an opportunity for us to talk to Daryl and see if there isn't some grant capabilities for this recreational, I mean, there's, go ahead.
It's a tiny progress.
I'm sorry?
It's a tiny progress.
Well, there you go. I love when I hear that stuff. Hope that makes you all feel better, too. It does me. Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome. You're welcome. Next up, Town Managers Report. Jeez, guys, some interesting stuff coming up. Okay, we're gonna carry on while you're, thank you. Department had updates. Any question or anything that was given us, comments? No, department had updates. Anything? Do you have something?
No, just, so Tracy, I don't know if I can confirm that I, I'll be attending that AdCom planning day on the thirty-first. Yes.
Okay.
Ladies, thank you. Thank you.
I didn't do it.
Anything else? Okay. Next up is the calendar. Oh, we already got to that. And then we had November fifth, well, October thirty-first, AdCom Annual Planning Day. Anybody else attending that?
I'm there.
Okay, good.
And Tom.
And Tom.
Tom and Cindy are two appointed gentlemen.
Yep. Perfect. Now, don't we typically get a ten-page written report, double-spaced, pictures and everything from that?
From Cindy.
As long as it's not single-spaced, that would be Tom.
Okay.
I made you participate.
We're voting November fifth here at the town office, eight in the morning to eight at night. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yep, thank you. Old business. Other business, town of Rangelay official ballot. What would you like me to talk about on that one?
Just luck you see it.
Okay, thank you. Yep. Any select board communications?
I have something.
No, go ahead.
I was contacted by a liaison from the U.S. Navy that oversees the place up here. And the USS Constitution and a bunch of other things in New England. She called me Friday. She wanted to make contact with someone. You all were at. You all were at, the town office was closed, so she didn't get anybody, I assume that's why. So I met with her this morning briefly. She just wanted to make contact with the town, make sure that they all knew that the Navy is in the interest of doing things we like and not in the interest of doing things we don't like. And very nice lady, and she wants to meet with John, but I don't know that.
Great, thank you.
Wow.
Yeah, thank you.
You said they don't wanna know anything.
We've had outreach like that, no.
She's out of here.
No, I'll, I'm gonna call her tomorrow.
Nothing super like important, she just wanted to make contact with someone.
Great. Anything else?
Get her home.
Get rowdy.
So there are a couple of newspaper articles regarding solar in the, one in the main Sunday Telegram and another in the Sun Journal. And it just, it stressed, there is a major scramble for land right now. They focused on telling how farmers are being approached and offers being made. This would be for the leased land option. And we're going to run out of time.
Our.
Yeah. Our Ransley substation is a hub of sorts to Stratton, Farmington and Rumford with only so much capacity. You can't plug a fire hose into a garden hose and make it work. And so there are already negotiations going on with area landholders for leasing their land for solar arrays. And if we don't act fast, we're gonna lose out. So we've been approached, AVCO, we've been put on AVCO's contact list. We've been approached by two solar companies. One, where we would have to purchase, that would be Revision. The other one, offering a lease option where they would pay us per acre. They'd pay personal property tax and it'd be theirs, their cost. And I, we need to do something before we miss out on a big income or revenue source for the town of Ransley at no cost to us and include lower energy costs. So basically, the, when Steve Hall was here to give his presentation, all they asked for, I mean, it's not, all they asked for is an initial right to look and review what we have available and for them to make an offer. They want an exclusive right to look, review and make an offer, we're not obligated. But it gets us in the pipeline. Because if we don't do anything and they've got these farmers and these large landholders that are signing off, there's currently two area projects that affect us that combined are a hundred and twenty acres. And I think they're looking at between twenty and thirty from us. And it's gonna be too late if we don't do anything.
Didn't we have somebody go up and look at?
Yeah, that was Steve Hall.
Steve.
Yeah.
And we haven't heard from him since.
He's, he's, he's waiting, I mean, he's given us the, you know, he's.
We have the next move?
Yeah. So that would be to engage, you know, it's like that he could present us with a draft contract just for review as to, I mean, it's basically their time, they do a feasibility study and analyze what, you know, what area power sources they have to feed into and what our capacity would be, if it's even worthwhile for them. I mean, they're not, you know, these, these players are looking at, I mean, we've been told it's, we have ideal, we have an ideal location. The training I was at in Jay, solar was a big, a big talk. And towns wishing they had land that they could lease to solar companies and make money off that isn't being used. So I've got a, I do have a call in, one of the AVCO speakers is, there is a present, there's a presentation on community solar from the Natural Resources Council of Maine. I've got a call in to her just to ask for some more impartial advice and feedback, but clock's ticking, people are signing on.
You know, driving home from Bangor the other day on Route Two through Pittsfield, I couldn't believe how big that chimp broke.
Yeah.
I mean, on and on and on, I never thought they'd like it.
The other thing that is unique for the town, see with these private landowners, you know, they don't have large electric bills, you know, they've got, you know, this, so they don't really benefit from, you know, from a credit for electricity, but a municipality does, you know, it's something extra they offer. That gets set by the PUC, that's out of our hands. But it's the, you know, and in here, in the newspaper article from this weekend, folks are getting eight hundred to a thousand dollars per acre for annual leases. So twenty, you know, possible twenty grand just for, just for the lease. And it's, you know, kinda like the, you know, Verizon approached us about the, about the tower lease, you know?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand right there. It's, you know, they, they want, they wanted to work with us, you know, they, we kept it simple.
All right, so what would you suggest? Because we have Shane McDougal, so we had one in the packet today from Guy.
That's just for feasibility study.
We have Mr. Hall that you were talking about. And then AVCO asked us to let them know if we had any sizable land that they could pass on to other developers. So those are four that I remember that we've had in the works here. And you say they're gonna have something at AVCO on.
There's a presentation, yeah, regarding community solar and.
So we have to do an RFP and let anybody come and do a feasibility study?
There's no feasibility study ahead of time that's needed. It's a waste of money, we were told by two, two.
Can you just say that Steve Hall was gonna come in to give us a feasibility study?
No, anyone, anyone that we would sign a contract with, it's, that's their next step, that's their cost based on, based on what, you know, what our land can offer. But that's, it's nothing we need to pay for, that's common knowledge. It's something that, you know, a company that you offer, you know, like a right of first, an exclusive right of first refusal, they would then come and do a feasibility study.
But how do you determine one person? How do we say Steve Hall is the guy that needs to come in and we need to enter?
It depends on their, like, for instance, Revision, you have to buy, you have to buy the product from them, which it, a town the size, to eventually be forced to buy it and maintain it and then dismantle it, we'd be lucky to break even probably. These are millions and millions of dollars to start up these projects. And so it leaves, Shane's got, has approached us with a lease option, as has Steve Hall, who's been here. AVCO's opened the doors for others to contact us, has anyone contacted us? Yeah. So that's, you know, that's where we're at, you know, we've, I brought this up a few months ago. And.
So you're giving us a word to the wise.
Yes, I am. That maybe we should, maybe we should, you know,
Start the process.
Vote to extend out, you know, okay Shane, you know, why don't you, why don't you show us a draft contract? Steve, what have you got? Just so we under.
Didn't, I'm sorry, did Steve Hall say that? I guess it's probably the exclusive thing you're talking about, he wanted to be able to give them. He didn't want anybody else to know what his price was, something like that?
Yeah, none of them, kinda like what we've dealt with with this land, you know, you know, we're being given an offer, you know, right of first refusal on this land, but, you know, but he doesn't want that out there, so, or we don't want that out there so someone can undercut us. I mean, it's an honest, you know.
But we have a signed agreement, so we're covered with that.
Yeah.
Would it be like an RFQ or RFP or something that would go out? I'm not.
They're really.
How would it work?
That, that really hasn't been the way, because these solar, because these companies are actively looking at available land, what's out there, they are pursuing what they want. And we have been pursued with who's interested. And.
So the two ways I heard that this is done is these companies like Shane and Hall, they'll come in, they'll install all this equipment, they'll pay us a land lease fee, personal property taxes and a partial reduction of our electric bill somewhere. And then the one we had from Guy, well, is that with the money we have in the airport reserve fund, we would own it and get the entire advantage of the savings on the electric bill. But only for the airport at least until it's studied. That's my understanding of the two difference in area, so.
It was actually.
I don't know what's better.
It's actually Revision who presented, all Guy offered was a feasibility study. They don't have a solar component at Du Bois King.
No, but then we, based on the study, we would pursue building it and owning it.
For, for millions of dollars is, is what I've been.
I don't know anything about it until the study's done, that's what we don't know.
So, but we'd have to pay eighteen or nineteen thousand dollars for that feasibility study where we've got other companies coming in that will look at town-owned property, including the airport, and do a feasibility study at no cost.
Well, we should start there then, and whoever's approached us so far, we send them, you know, come on up and give us a plan. So they can make a decision, or make some decision. And then at the same time, we should go to AVCO and see how many of these companies they actually have looking for town lands or, you know, finally, there's something available.
It was, it was, it's an eye-opening article regarding this mad scramble for, for good land.
Thank you. Anything else?
So do we need to take a vote as far as, you know, reaching out to Shane?
Well, well, everybody who's approached us already will reach out and see if they can come up with.
All set?
That's all you have?
We have to go into executive session. No, we don't? Holy smokers. You can motion to adjourn.
Second.
Home favor?
Give me five all night. You were just waiting for that, weren't you?
Twenty minutes ago.